Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I welcome you to the private city council Tuesday, December fifteenth, 2015. City council meeting. I said you stand for the pledge of allegiance of American flag and remain standing for our amication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Oh gracious God, we come as an army as we know how this afternoon. Lord, I want to say thank you for being so good to us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to live in a land that we can come down and conduct business as citizens of the city of Prattville in the Chalk County. Thank you for the individuals who have assembled here tonight. We pray, Lord, that you'll guide our tongue, guide our mind, as we make these decisions. Let us make decisions that are in the best interests of your people. And when we leave tonight, oh Lord, direct us to our families safely. We give you the glory, we give you the honor and the praise. Amen. Madam Clerk, call her off.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this city council meeting to order. Character trait of the month is compassion, invest in whatever is necessary to heal the hurts of others. And that's a real good character trait for this month. Invest in whatever is necessary to heal the hurts of others. At this time, we have approval of amendments. Public hearing in the city council meeting, December first, 2015. Do we have a motion?
So.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, signify by raising your right hand. Those minutes have been approved. At this time, we have comments from present and present regarding any item on tonight's agenda. Please come to the microphone. Yes, sir.
Dr. Jerry Simms, 141 North Chestnut Street. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. I wanted to touch base on the ordinance number one in your agenda, which is the exemption for the business license. I think it's a noble cause, and I understand why you're wanting to do that for certain entities that would do things for parks and rec where it just doesn't make economic sense for them to have to pay a business license. I also understand that evidently we modeled ours after Auburn and that they've hopefully done their legal due diligence only. I mention that only because my dental board is now embroiled in a case, a multimillion-dollar case involving the FTC over bleaching. So I always get nervous when there's any restrictions of trade or any of that sort of thing. So assuming that the due diligence is accurate, the only flaw that I see in the ordinance as it's written is, I own several properties, and let's say I decide that I want to lease those properties to you, the city. The way this is worded right now, I don't have to have a business license. I'm really practicing or in the business of real estate, but as long as I only do it with you, I don't have to pay business license. I don't think that's right. I think that I should pay for business license. So with that in mind, I would recommend that you amend something to exclude certain kinds of business activities. And I realize that may mean that you need to table it tonight and make some amendments. If you want to leave that door open, I thank you, but my intention is not to avoid paying a business license if I decide to lease some properties. And I say I, it could be anybody in town. I don't think that was your intent, but like every ordinance, it's impossible to sometimes think of every possible if, but rental properties is certainly a big if because in the city we lease properties. That's what, some of what we do. So that was my only other comment, so.
Thank you. Does any council member have any questions or comments, Dr. Simms?
Just on your example, I mean, one of the areas in here, it says if it's got to can't, it's got to meet the below the bid law. I think any kind of property you rent was going to be above that.
Well, the bid law, if I understand it right, is fifteen thousand for non-public works and fifty thousand for public works. So let's, you know, let's just say I rent several properties that end up being less than the fifteen thousand. I don't have to pay any. And let's say, and let's say there's several people like me, then we're losing out on our business. Just like right now, we're losing out probably on a bunch of folks don't know that if they rent, have a rental home or homes, and they have a gross rental of, I believe it's what, six thousand there?
Um, it's more than that.
Okay. Anyhow, there's a threshold, and if you're above that, you have to have a business license to rent out a property. And I think a lot of citizens don't know it, first of all, and probably aren't paying the tax on it, but yes, fifteen thousand is the threshold for a non-public works. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments at this time? Just a question for our city attorney. On this ordinance or any other ordinance item that we should happen to pass if we pass it tonight, there is also an area that we can come back and amend the same ordinance at that time if we needed to amend it. Thank you. Anyone else? Mayor, you have a vote?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening to you all. Council President, I'd like to say congratulations to Council, Counselor Denise Brown on earning her certified municipal official designation, which was awarded last Wednesday evening. It's an important accomplishment and shows her dedication to the cities and its constituents. So Denise Brown, congratulations on that. Council President Wood, I know you held the advanced version of that for many, many years now. You might have been one of the first classes that achieved that. I could be wrong. If I am correct.
That is a great possibility.
Okay. Well, good. Congratulations on that, too, because it does show your dedication to the city and to your constituents. So thank you on that one. You know, we just had the largest attended Christmas parade with our, with the most participation ever. It was a great event. I want to thank everybody that had something to do with that, everything, every department from our parks and recs, our police, our fire, our public works, our engineering, and everyone else who had something to do with that, because there was, and then we had our cert organization that was out there. It took quite a bit to get this accomplished, and I just want to say thank you to everybody there. Just throw some historic dates out there tonight, too. Seventeen ninety-one, fifteenth day of December, amendments were ratified by Congress and then known as the Bill of Rights. Eighteen nineteen, fourteenth day of December, Alabama became the twenty-second state admitted to the Union. Eighteen thirty-nine, Prattville was established and is now known as the birthplace of industry in Alabama. Twenty fifteen, the calendar year of, how many people look back on history and view what has been accomplished? I, for one, think calendar year twenty fifteen has been very fulfilling, very rewarding. Prattville looks great and is on the move. I want to thank our department heads, our superintendents, our staff, for all their hard work and dedication this past year. We are a mechanized, service-oriented organization. It takes everyone to get the job done. Counselors, I want to thank you for all your hard work, for our partners at Prattville, and I want to thank our partners at Prattville and their support of, their love for, and their commitment to Daniel Pratt's Village. I want to thank, thank you again. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, and also please have a happy and very safe New Year. Mr. President, I send my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Counsel Bowles.
Mayor, I realize this is your report, but I sure wish you'd take a point of privilege and ask Ms. Hamm, chief, to come up and tell us about her FBI experience. I would like to hear about that.
Well, very good point, Mayor. And she has a moment. Chief Thompson doesn't mind. It is good to have her back in Prattville. We've missed her. New hairstyle since the last time we seen her. The lean and not-so-lean assistant. Glad you're back.
Good evening, good evening. Thank you so much. I just want to say, first of all, thank God for the opportunity to the mayor and the chief for selecting me and for the city council for signing off on it, because of course there was some finances involved. So I, I'm so grateful to have been selected in the top one percent of law enforcement to attend this training. I received a vast amount of training, a lot of physical exercise, a lot of networking. I met people from all over the world, twenty-seven countries, some of which I hope to remain friends with, but I'm grateful to be back. I do miss home to a degree, but when it got closer to the end, I was wanting to stay longer. But there's so much to talk about. I took public speaking classes, media relations. Some of those things are going to really help me in my career, showing me how to really message when I'm talking to the, to the media, and maybe I can share some of that with the mayor. But legal issues, it was, it was a grand, as the FBI call it, the crown jewel of law enforcement training. But once again, I appreciate the opportunity to go, and I pray that our city will continue this, as I was the very first from our agency to go. And I'm hoping that we can get a slot per year to send all of our captains and then our lieutenants, but it was, I mean, words can't express my gratitude for this opportunity. And I won't talk long. Thank you.
What was your class number again?
My class number two sixty-second.
Two sixty-second. Okay. Well, I know Chief Thompson.
It's the one seventy-eight.
The one, the one, the first class?
No, not the first. One hundred and seventy-eight, many years, many years ago.
Well, congratulations. You, you really represented Prattville very, very well. So thank you. But there again, glad you're home. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Again, we are proud of you, Assistant Chief Hamm, and it's a blessing to be back safe. There are people who are not safe, and we live in a country where we have privileges. So moving right along, we have a report from Council on Special Committees, Counsel Striplin.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, the meeting of the wastewater committee was held Tuesday afternoon, December the fifteenth, at two P.M. at the Doster Center. All committee members were present. Mr. Greg Thompson, Engineers of the South, was also present. Mr. Jim Marshall from Jackson Thornton Utilities provided a preliminary report on the current status of the Wastewater Enterprise Fund's financial position as the committee considers moving forward with Phase One of an upgrade to our Pine Creek wastewater facility. The committee expects a more detailed report early next year when Mr. Marshall's findings will be reported to the council for consideration. With funds available to begin the year-long engineering design, the committee discussed the need to amend the Wastewater Enterprise budget in January of 2016 to authorize the engineering design work of the Pine Creek Phase One project to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Brown.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Starnes.
No, sir.
Counsel Whiteside.
No, sir.
Counsel Bowles.
No, sir.
Counsel Boone.
Yes, sir.
This time, we have a report on the status of city finances from our finance director.
Well, I'll give you more than a thumbs up tonight. How about that? The first sheet in the report is the revenue report for the month of November. You will see that so far this year, we have received eight point two one percent of our budgeted revenues, and year-to-date, we are up four point five four percent. So that's a very positive trend on the revenue side. The next sheet is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of November, showing that for the month of November, we were up four point seven one percent on our taxes. You will see the lodging fee was down a little bit. That's due to some of the different changes in events and stuff during the month of November, actually, the month of October. The next sheet in the packet is the expense report broken down by department. You will see that everybody's running right in line where they should be on their expenses. You will see that so far, we have spent seventeen point seven one percent of our budgeted revenues. You will also see it under debt service, a rather large one point nine million dollar payment. That is to, that was to pay off the remainder of the two thousand six A bond that was left over. So that is off the books now. We do have a portion of, two portions of that that were refunded in previous refundings, but that remainder is gone. One thing you will note, it kind of looks a little odd if you looked at year-to-date difference, that we've spent one point seven million dollars less. That is due to the large repayment of the two thousand seven bond that we did last year that was two million dollars. That's what the difference is there. The next sheet in the packet is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund income statement, showing that the net revenue so far this year, for the month of November, was thirty-five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-nine cents. And we do have a, the remainder of the SRF that's going to be paid off in the Wastewater Fund, I believe it's in February, so that will be falling off as well. The next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will see that the net incomes for the month of November was fifty-seven thousand thirty-five dollars and fifty-four cents. We should be receiving the equipment that was ordered at the end of last year within the next, probably, month or two. We're going to be working on the financing deal on that in the next couple of weeks to get that nailed down. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. You will see the net income for the month of November was negative nineteen thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents, and we have fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-nine dollars in the suspense accounts. That fund is coming back. As you know, when we discontinued JACS, that put us behind on collections. They are making their way back on that, though. The next sheet is the bank account balances report, showing that the balance of all city funds at the end of November twenty fifteen was fifteen million eight hundred and eight thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. And the last sheet in the packet is the accounts payable and debt balances, showing the debt balance as of November thirtieth, twenty fifteen, was thirty-eight million five hundred and eighty, sorry, five hundred and sixty-one thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents. And as you'll see on the two thousand six A bonds, it is blank there now, so.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles, council member.
I got a couple of questions. You said something was being paid off in February. Which line was that?
That is going to be the two thousand, the SRF oh six. It's about midway down.
Four hundred and twenty thousand?
Four hundred and twenty thousand, yes, sir.
Will be gone.
Yes, sir.
And I see we have fifteen million in the bank, almost sixteen. Is there, what year did the new administration take over, this administration take over?
Two thousand eleven.
Is there any way to go back to two thousand eleven on this report in the future and put down what our debt service was and what our bank reserve was to remind us where we were before?
I actually have a spreadsheet, and that's the beginning.
Well, could you add that date to this from now on for me? It's just a good way to remind us where we were, where we're headed, and what not to do again. Thank you.
We're moving to our agenda. We do have a consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda to consider. Number one is a resolution to appoint Kyle W. Glover to the Industrial Development Board. Number two is a resolution to surplus one vehicle from the Police Department. We have a motion to place these two items on a consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in discussion. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda, signify by raising your right hand. And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. We have a motion to adopt consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in discussion on adoption of these two items. All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And these two items have been adopted. We go further in our agenda. Our first item is an ordinance to amend certain provisions of the City of Prattville Business License Ordinance to add an exemption for certain businesses doing business only with the city of Prattville. Counsel Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville, Alabama, as follows. Section one, businesses that have been engaged by the city of Prattville to provide goods or services to the city shall hereby be exempt from business licensing requirements of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Prattville, Article Five, Business Licenses and Taxes, under the following circumstances. One, during each specific calendar year, the individual or firm so engaged by the city has not conducted any business within the city limits of the city of Prattville, other than with the city, does not anticipate conducting any business within the city limits of the city of Prattville, other than with the city, and does not have a business located inside the city limits of the city of Prattville that conducts business elsewhere. And, two, the projected amount of the fees to be paid to such individual or firm during the specified calendar year by the city for goods or services to be provided to the city during the specified calendar year is less than the then-current state of Alabama bid law amount. And, three, the individual or firm so engaged has executed a written statement to claim exemption, certifying to the finance director of the city of Prattville that during the specific calendar year, the individual or firm has not conducted any business within the city limits of the city of Prattville, other than with the city, does not anticipate conducting any business within the city limits of the city of Prattville, other than with the city, and does not have a business located inside the city limits of the city of Prattville that conducts business elsewhere. And further certifying that, A, if such individual or firm during the specified calendar year receives either fees from the city for goods or services exceeding the then-current state of Alabama competitive bid minimum, or fees from other entities for doing business within the city limits of the city of Prattville, then such individual or firm acknowledges that the individual or firm will no longer be exempt from the business licensing provisions of this ordinance. And, B, if such individual or firm was exempted from the business licensing provisions of this ordinance, and later during the same calendar year, shall fail to qualify for the exemption provided under this ordinance, such individual or firm shall be subject to all provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Prattville, Article Five, Business Licenses and Taxes, which includes the requirements to keep records, to make records available to the city, to pay business license fees, and any late penalties and interest which may be due upon, and all other provisions. And, C, if such individual or firm has made a false statement on the statements to claim exemption, such individual or firm shall be subject to all penalties under the Code of Ordinances of the city of Prattville, Article Five, Business Licenses and Taxes, for failure to apply for a business license or failure to apply for a renewal business license, provided, however, that such individual or firm that has obtained an exemption from the business licensing provisions of the city shall have thirty calendar days from the date on which the individual or firm has knowledge that the certification such individual or firm had made in the statement to claim exemption is no longer true. To apply for a city of Prattville business license without being assessed late penalties or interest, further provided that in such circumstances, the calculation of the business license fee due from such individual or firm shall include the gross receipts from the city of Prattville that gave rise to the claim for exemption. Section two, all other provisions of Code of Ordinances of the city of Prattville, Article Five, Business Licenses and Taxes, not previously amended, shall remain in full force and effect. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. As being an ordinance of permanent nature, the rules must be suspended unanimously in order to be considered tonight. We have a motion to suspend the rules. We have a motion. Do we have a second to suspend? This motion, rules will not be suspended for lack of a second, and will be held for Item number three, start rise of mayor to enter into agreement with Fontanat Benefits and Actuary Consultant for... Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that one. Okay. Thank you for your correction there. Ordinance number two, to amend City of Prattville Code of Ordinance, Chapter sixty-two, Division Three, Truck Routes, Section sixty-two dash one-one-five, established, and sixty-two dash one-sixteen prohibited. Counsel Brown.
Be it ordained by the city council of the city of Prattville that City Code, Chapter sixty-two, Division Three, Truck Routes, Section sixty-two dash one-one-five and sixty-two dash one-one-six are hereby amended to read as follows. Section sixty-two dash one-one-five, established. The following routes are established as truck routes, U.S. Highway eighty-two, Alabama Highway number fourteen, and U.S. Highway thirty-one. Section sixty-two dash one-one-six prohibited. The following streets or sections of streets are hereby designated prohibited routes because of weight restrictions and other conditions deemed hazardous. Bridge Street between Maple Street and Main Street, and Maple Street between Bridge Street and Washington Street. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved, Mr. President.
Have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. The rules must be suspended also on this item in order to be considered. Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rules, signify by raising your right hand. Rules have been suspended on this ordinance. Be in discussion on this ordinance. All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that one of the first things when I took this position here at city council was I got a lot of complaints and stuff about trucks going down really right between, right between the two neighborhoods, McCon Regge and Prattville East. And I've actually told my wife not to go out that way during the prime times, early in the morning, late in the afternoon, because of the risk factor is just really high. And not just with trucks, but just with the amount of cars. And you had trucks, it makes the risk go even higher. So from a safety perspective, school buses pulling out on that road and the YMCA, it's been a, something I've really pushed for is to try and get this established. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. And this item is adopted. Now to number three, which is a resolution to authorize a mayor to enter into an agreement with Fontanat Benefits and Actuary Consulting for GASP Statement Forty-five, actuarial services at a cost of five thousand dollars. Counsel Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Governmental Accounting Standards Board's GASB sets accounting standards for state and local governments and issue statements setting forth such standards, and whereas GASB Statement Forty-five requires state and local governments providing other post-employment benefits, OPEB, to account for and report such benefits in accordance with the GASB guidelines, and whereas an actuarial valuation is required to comply with GASB Statement Forty-five, and whereas the city of Prattville provides OPEB in the form of retiree participation in the city's health insurance plan, and whereas the city is thereby required to have an actuary, actuarial valuation of its OPEB liability in order to comply with the requirements of GASB Statement Forty-five, and whereas Fontanat Benefits and Actuarial Consulting, FBA, FBAC, has the expertise to perform these services at a cost of five thousand dollars, and whereas this is a budgeted expense for the finance department, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that funds in an amount of five thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to FBAC, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the FY twenty sixteen Budget Line Item, Finance Department slash auditing. Be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized and empowered to execute a contract for GASB Statement Forty-five Actuarial Valuation Services with FBAC. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the, have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signified by raising the right hand. And this item is adopted. Item number four, resolution to amend budget and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Montgomery County to guarantee one bed space for juvenile offenders at the Montgomery County Youth Facility at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Counselor Sterns, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Montgomery County operates a youth detention facility, and whereas the City of Prattville has a need to utilize said youth facility, and whereas Montgomery County will guarantee one bed space for juvenile offenders for the City of Prattville at the Montgomery County Youth Facility at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the remainder of fiscal year twenty sixteen. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville, fiscal year twenty sixteen Budget Line Item, Police Department Equipment Maintenance is hereby decreased fifteen thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty sixteen Budget Line Item, Police Department Miscellaneous Contract Services is hereby increased fifteen thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Montgomery County for the guarantee of one bed space at the Montgomery County Youth Facility, and said funds are approved and appropriated from fiscal twenty-year, twenty-year, ah, excuse me, fiscal year twenty sixteen Budget Line Item, Police Department Miscellaneous Contract Services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize and empower the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute any and all documents necessary to have this work performed for and behalf of the City of Prattville. So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor, signified by raising the right hand. And this item is adopted. At this time, we'll take comments from persons present, and one wishing to make a statement, please raise your hand. Mayor, you have any closing comments? Counselor Stripling?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brown?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Sterns?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Counselor Whiteside?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Bowles?
Yes, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Years, and don't forget the raisin for the season, which is Jesus. Thank you.
Counselor Boone?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to say a word of thanks to all the departments who made the decorations and the parade go off with such, without a hitch. I mean, it was a wonderful event this year. So much city participation, and I know how much hard work went into that, and those are behind-the-scenes things that, that don't get seen enough. Thank you, guys, for making that work for us.
Thank you. Let me take this opportunity to thank all you all for coming tonight. Thank all city employees for the job that you do. I continue to thank the mayor and his administration for what you're doing, especially in working with your respective committees. As you heard the report from Counselor Stripling tonight regarding wastewater. It's work like that that makes sure that the city is moving forward and moving forward positively. So in the near future, there will be a lot more conversation on wastewater. It's a very important issue. That's why I speak on it again. It's an expensive issue, but it's an issue that is needed, uh, to carry this city forward for twenty-five, next thirty years. Let me also, again, congratulate, uh, Assistant Chief Hamm on a job well done, and we're thankful that you're back safe. Let me also, uh, say on ordinance number one that I would love to see that the, the kinks are worked out between, uh, Mr. Moser's office and the city attorney or whomever, before we, you know, have it back before us, that we can go ahead and pass it without having it up here again and still having to go through this discussion, so I would appreciate that. One other item, I would like to congratulate Counselor Brown also for earning her certificate of municipal official designation, but also Mayor Gillespie on earning his advanced certified municipal official designation. Well-deserved. And on him earning his advanced certificate municipal official designation, that should also get you to understanding that these point of privileges should be cut shorter. With that being said, I wish all of you a Merry Christmas, a joyous Christmas, and a happy and healthy New Year. Our next council meeting will be Tuesday, January the fifth, twenty sixteen, six P.M. here in these chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
We adjourn.